Welcome everyone to tonight's school committee meeting. We are a little light. Daryl Baker is stuck traveling. And Chuck is at the science fair at the middle school. It's a busy night in the district. Apparently, there's something going on in every building. That's why there are no principals here either.
True.
They're overseeing the activities in their building, but that's fine. We'll move forward as best we can. To get started, I would like to start with a pledge of allegiance. Alex, can you listen to that, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to go on to the consent agenda, the minutes from March 26, 2015, oath to bills and payroll. Do you have a motion on that?
Uh, moved to the second minute.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Actually, any discussion? Any comments? Discussion? Nope? Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, that passes. We are on interested citizens. We will do one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end of the meeting. Are there any interested citizens that would like to speak on any subjects relevant to the school district? Alright, seeing none, we'll move to recognition.
Thank you. I need some help here before I start on pronunciation of a last name.
That's it.
Pullo?
That's it, Pullo.
Pullo?
Pullo.
Alright. We have two high school students, Kelly Pullo. Do you guys know her?
Um, I don't believe so.
Do you know Kelsey Pulot or Kelly Pulot? Pulio?
Pulio?
Supposed to be Pulio? Is it Pulio? Okay. We have a teacher in the back who's telling us Pulio.
Pulio? Pulio? Thank you. I just didn't want to give it a Western dialect.
You could have done it. We would have cut you slack. You're Canadian.
You guys don't cut me enough slack at times when I pass.
Only when we need to.
Resources is the one that gets me.
Alright. First recognition this evening, Ruth Ballard, LHS student, was named runner-up for poetry submission to the Helen Creely Student Poetry Competition. And we've enclosed her poem in the package. It's incredible. She did a great job. Kelly Pullo? Pullo?
LHS students, 2015 Bruins, MIAA Sportsmanship Award. I've also enclosed the letter for recognition in the package. A great accomplishment. Very proud to have one of our students receive such a prestigious award, especially a sportsmanship award. That's just great.
Another, some more?
Real quick, before you move on, and I don't know if you noticed or not, but the person who sent that letter is actually an alumni of the high school as well.
Oh.
Mike Dargan is an employee for the Bruins now, so he was the one who organized that.
That's great. That's really special. Third recognition, Littleton Public Schools received the Aspen District of the Year Award. And if you recall, Aspen is a data management system that we have. So, again, quite a prestigious award to be recognized, the only district in the state, for maximizing the use of Aspen and showing creativity and paving the way, so to speak, in terms of data management. So, we're very proud of Mike McEckern and his tech team, so.
And along with the staff too, who are embracing the use. The teachers primarily at the middle school and the high school were using that to put their assignments on and track grades and Exactly. and use that outlet from the students and the parents as well.
So, I'm very, very proud of that accomplishment as well. Spring sports, kudos to the coaches that were remaining patient as we pretend our grounds are drying up. This weekend, apparently, it'll be in the sixties and hopefully there'll be some wind to help dry the fields out for us. We had a great council on aging school district luncheon this afternoon at the high school. Pretty close to ninety people, around ninety people there. Our bands performed, our choir performed. We had a number of students helping out, serving, and cleaning up. A great event and certainly a great opportunity for us to recognize our seniors within the community. Tonight, we have the science fair going on as we speak. I had a chance to stop in and talk to some kids and parents and tweeted out a few pictures. So, make sure you check out Twitter, either on our website or on my account. Should be easy to find. And I also stopped in at the Russell Street Basket Raffle and Ice Cream Social, took a few pictures as well, and I tweeted them out. Great baskets this year. Unbelievable. Just tons of baskets there and teachers were scooping ice cream and whipped cream in the cafeteria. So, I took a few pictures of them as well. So, if you have a chance to stop in, it's still going on and you won't be disappointed at either event. Just incredible. And that is it for my acknowledgements.
Alright, the next item on the agenda is the finance committee interviews slash appointment. We have two appointees to the finance committee in our current, one of our current appointees, Betsy Bowling. Her candidacy is up. We posted this for anybody that was interested in applying for it. Betsy indicated she was interested in continuing. No other citizens stepped up. I'll take that as acknowledgement that they either felt she was doing such a great job or there was no way that they could impress us more than she has in getting the job, so. She is our only candidate, so we don't have to go through too much, we don't have to go through any process. You know, it's a big commitment. I think the FinCon meets more often than the school committee does over the course of the year. You guys may see me almost every week, right?
Uh, it's usually every couple of weeks.
Every couple of weeks, okay.
It's usually summer off either.
So, it is a big commitment. It's a very, you know, I don't know, typically, we usually think of it as the big three, the Board of Selectment, the Finance Committee, and the School Committee, at least in terms of the budget. And we're usually the biggest three parties in regards to that. So, it's a significant role in town government. Betsy's not, is it, is it a three-year appointment? Three-year appointment, and you've done one term already on that, so you're willing to re-up? You're sure? You ask your husband?
Don't ask her.
What question's that?
No, no, I mean in the sense that any, no, no, no. I'm saying because you're, I would ask the same question if it were, if it were our other point, I'd say, "Did you ask your wife?"
Okay.
Because the spouses have to know that, you know, the person that's participating is not going to be around as much as you think he or she is going to be. No, I didn't mean that in that sense. I only meant it in terms of you have to check with your partner.
Yeah.
Alright. Do you have any, any comments or reflections on your first three years?
No, I mean, it's a huge learning curve. I mean, you really need to stay on another term. I mean, if, you know, the board so chooses to re-point you, because there really is a big learning curve, especially the FinCon. Most people come in, especially if you have any kind of accounting background, but of course, municipal accounting is nothing like private sector accounting, and so there's a lot of learning. And then just understanding how the town works and seeing all that. And it's been fascinating and I think, I mean, the good news is, I was talking to some of the people ahead of time, is that the town really is in very, very well-run, you know, overall. I mean, you've always got the issues and there's different, which is healthy, that people have different opinions and want to go different places. But in general, it is very well-run, so it's a, it's good to be a part of that and to keep it going and to feel the responsibility to just maintain that even keel so we can, we can continue to, you know, take good care of the citizens and do what we need to do all the way around. I am the chair now, so that was, that happened faster than I would have thought because of some other changes on there, so. And the way that usually works is you're chair for two years on FinCon, so I'll probably be chair again next time. And, no, my other, other comment was on my, on my application letter. It was purely innocent, my comment, when I wrote, "Dear sirs," and I put the PS at the bottom. I had no idea about elections or anything at that point. It was just, it really had been a long time since I could write a letter to a group of people and write, "Dear sirs," and so. It's all they should comment on, but so I want to let you know. That was no, no political intent on that at all.
Excellent. You guys have any comments or questions for Betsy?
I'll just say that I think, I think we're lucky that she serves on the board. I've known Mrs. Bowling since I was a kid and, you know, I hold her at high esteem, so I think we're lucky that she represents us.
Yeah, it's a big commitment. It's not just the FinCon meetings either. I see you at every Board of Selectment meeting that I end up going to or that one of us ends up going to for my school committee role, you're almost always there, maybe always there. And there are other meetings throughout the, throughout the week that I know you attend. There's a big meeting, the all-day Saturday meeting, that we don't need to stay all day. You do. So, it's a big, it's a big commitment. So, thank you for being willing to do it for another three years. And just so you know, it's really frowned upon if you do, if you say you'll do it and you change your mind. I understand. Not saying you should do that. Warning you. But thank, thank you very much for doing it because it's a big role.
I appreciate the fact, I think you hit the nail on the head, Betsy, because I felt the same way when I went through the first term here on the school committee, is there is a learning curve. And it's kind of a bummer if you get through all that and, you know, actually get a chance to take advantage of what you, your knowledge you've gained. It sounds like you're engaged and enthusiastic. Even after three years, you're ready to keep going, so we'd be crazy, even if there was another candidate, I think they would be hard-pressed to get past your qualifications initially, but then your experience level over those three years, I think, you know, we need to take advantage of that. It's easy enough to now to be able to do that, and we're glad we're going to be able to. We appreciate the effort that you're putting forth, and we look forward to another three years of your advocacy for the town on the finance committee. Given that, we will take a motion.
I make a motion that the school committee appoint Betsy Bowling to fill one of our seats on the finance committee.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Alright, hearing none. Move the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Unanimous? Three, thanks for three. Thank you. Alright, we are moving on to presentations.
I'm not sure if we have everybody here yet. I was hoping President Harrington was here. Let's see.
Well, you know what?
Do you want to do the NELMs?
We can do the NELMs. Dr. Branco's here. You want to do the NELMs? How long, how long is that presentation?
Jamie's here though, right? Jamie?
Not yet.
Not yet?
No.
Okay, so, Jamie will be coming though?
Yes.
Okay, so we get to switch those around.
Okay, let's, let's go ahead and do the NELMs presentation, and then we'll bounce back.
Okay.
Good evening. So, my purpose tonight is just to let everybody kind of have a little commercial update on Littleton Middle School's involvement in this year's NELMs annual conference. So, NELMs stands for the New England League of Middle Schools. It is one of the largest regional middle school organizations in the country, having six states. And it's one of the most impactful and active organizations in the country for middle school educators. Happens to be an organization that I'm on the board of directors for, so I'm pretty passionate about Littleton Middle School's participation in this, in this particular conference every year. This year was the 34th annual conference, was held on March 23rd and 24th at the Rhode Island Convention Center and Omni Hotel, which is a fantastic spot. So, everybody converges, you know, from all six states and comes down. And really, even though it's the New England League of Middle Schools, we've got participants who are international. They travel from everywhere, including Canada, from Europe. We had people coming from, you know, Jersey and California. So, it really has become a vibrant international conference, even though it's specifically run for the purpose of the New England League of Middle Schools. There were over 500 attendees this year, which was up by about 150. So, every year, we try to grow the conference a little more. So, our 35th conference is next year, and our hope is to really hit 600 or 700 attendees next year over the two days, which is a very large conference, especially for a niche organization such as middle school teachers. So, it's to get, to get that amount of participation is fantastic. There are 35 spotlight schools in the New England League of Middle Schools. Littleton Middle School happens to be one of those 35 schools. There's an accreditation process that you go through every three years to get re-accredited as a spotlight school. We're actually up for accreditation this particular year. So, there'll be a site visit team so that there's no conflict of interest. I can't participate in that, obviously, because I actually go out and do a lot of accreditation visits. So, I go out as a board member and re-accredit or certify spotlight schools when they, when they submit applications to do that work. But for this particular purpose, I step out of the, out of the shadow and let them, out of the spotlight, sorry, and let them do it. So, there are 35 spotlight schools, and in order to get that designation, you have to have site visits, you have to meet exemplary practices. There are all kinds of specific middle school practices that have to be met that not only us, but the other 34 schools are involved in. And then, we kind of lean on those 35 schools as well as other schools from across the world to come and populate our sessions at the conference and to really share best practices. And it is fantastic. It's very, very jam-packed. So, there were 118 75-minute concurrent sessions over two days. And those are about 75-minute sessions, including ticketed luncheons, including keynote speakers, Rick Warmley and Kim Campbell, who are nationally, internationally-recognized educators and authors, were our two keynote speakers for this particular conference, so they also ran their own sessions and their own ticketed luncheon sessions. So, it was a fantastic conference. One of the proud things that I'm here to talk about, really, other than the commercial for NELMs, is that we had nine Littleton Public School staff members this year presenting at the conference. And I think that when we talk about best practices within our district and what can we learn from other districts and how can we build capacity within our area? We talk about shared practices, shared understandings, learning from other school districts, combined professional development opportunities. I think what's important for the community to understand is our faculty is doing that in a lot of ways, and this is a great example of one way that they're doing that. So, they took the best of what Littleton does, and they wrote some very robust training sessions for the conferences for our 500 attendees. So, I'd like to let you know a little bit about who went and who, who did the work. I have to give massive kudos to our technology team, Mike McEckern and Natalie Branch, along with Julie Lord, who put together, we believe they set a NELMs record, they did four concurrent sessions on the same day. They were pretty tired by the end, quite honestly. So, they gave four sessions. One called Using Chromebooks and Mobile Devices in the Classroom, another section called, session called Google Drive Basics, another called Hashtag Twitter Time, and a fourth session called Using Google Forms for Surveys and Assessments. And these were all open sessions where middle school educators could come in, bring their own device, literally, and in a really good, solid 75-minute workshop, get a differentiated experience, whether they were novices or pros in these areas, and really kind of learn from the Littleton Public School tech team on how to do this work well and integrate technology. So, I really want to applaud those three because if you know Mr. McEckern and, and Ms. Branch, you know that they're ridiculously busy within our school district, wearing many hats, covering four schools and a central office. So, for them to give up quality work time and be able to represent us and go down there and train and put these sessions together, speaks volumes for who they are as professionals, to expand their abilities, and also to represent us at the national level, to kind of put Littleton on the map and share what we do here. So, I really want them to, and I've said this to them personally, but I want people to hear that what they did to represent us is very, very impactful. They also served as the unofficial tech support team for the entire conference, you know, and so if you know these guys, you know that you can just reach out to Ms. Lord, or you can reach out to Mike McEckern, or you can call Ms. Branch right up, and any, any quick fix you need, they're willing to do that. The people at NELMs figured that out very quickly, so whenever there was a problem in a room or something needed to be patched and put back together, whether they were from Rhode Island, Canada, Finland, or, or Littleton, Massachusetts, they called our guys up, and, and they did a lot of good work there. Other presenters, Dr. Finerty, Valerie Finerty, who's our eighth grade science teacher and science coordinator, led a great session called Reading and Writing to Learn Science, with the big push for Common Core right now. She has done a lot of that work with the middle school faculty, particularly in her classroom and in the seventh and sixth grade to assist. And so, she put together a great session specifically for middle school science teachers to help them understand how to better attack the reading and writing component within the science class. There's been this huge emphasis, obviously, on stamina, on authentic learning, and hands-on application. You, we can't forget that we have to create literate citizens and literate scientists and mathematicians. They have to be able to write and read about their, their craft, and so while we have to focus on the doing, we've got to make sure that they can still articulate it and read it and write it, and that's really kind of the premise, the overarching premise of Common Core, and so Valerie did some good work around that. Ms. Morgan and Mr. Walsh, two of our social studies teachers at the middle school, Ms. Morgan is also our five-to-12 curriculum coordinator in that department, did a great session called Flipping Out. It was all about the flipped classroom. So, again, it was a BYOD situation where all the educators in the conference brought their own technology. They asked them to come prepared with a lesson, just a traditional lesson, and then in a 75-minute session, they helped the participants, at whatever level they were comfortable with, develop their own flipped classroom model so that the students could use technology to learn at home in the evening, using the flipped model, and then come back to school and do something more authentic in the classroom the next day. So, it's a, it's a technique that we're using a lot at the middle school in a lot of different places and different classrooms right now. Flipped classroom and blended learning are two big, big things that are happening. The difference is the flipped classroom, the technology and the work gets done at home, and then they come back and do some authentic application. Blended actually happens in real time, so there's some traditional classroom experience mixed in with tech integration simultaneously in the classroom. So, those things sometimes get interchanged when we use them in conversation, but they're, they're different. And so, Beth and Ryan did some great session, session work on Flipping Out. Mr. Todd Jabai, also from our social studies department, did a cool session entitled Techy Projects for Non-Techy Teachers. So, basically, his premise was, you know, we have digital, digital natives, so we've got this whole group of kids who are growing up with this. And then we have another group of people, and I'll include old people like myself in this, called digital immigrants, who are still trying to play catch-up in a lot of respects. So, the reality is, we have So the reality is, we have teachers who understand how important it is to implement technology, because every one of these kids is growing up with it, including my own 13-year-old and eight-year-old. And my eight-year-old is teaching my mother what to do on her iPad. It's a fascinating thing to watch. And so that's the reality. So Mr. Jabai's session was all about, you know, not getting in the way of that, relaxing your comfort level a little bit, and taking some really easy techniques and letting kids run with them technologically. Very, very cool. Without being an ageist, it was fascinating to see who went into that session and how they smiled when they came out. They felt really good, and I think that was a really interesting session to see occur. Tracy Turner, who I like to claim is a Littleton Middle School faculty member, she started the high school, and then they stole her back this year, is a fantastic special educator up at the high school this year, recently completed her doctorate work at Northeastern, and then turned her thesis into a fantastic session. Her session was called Hidden Bullying: Relational Aggression at the Middle School. And it was all around the subtle bullying that exists between boys and girls, quite honestly, in relationships, peers, people who they call friends, and how that is a whole cultural phenomenon that maybe existed when I was a middle schooler, but it is right there and palpable right now with the kids today. And so, you know, we cross the line, even with our closest friends sometimes, and don't realize what we've done to them. So she did a fascinating study on that and had a packed room, quite honestly. A lot of people were concerned about the social-emotional needs of our kids nowadays, and so she did a fantastic job presenting that. And then humbly, myself and a good friend of mine, Dr. Chris Chu, who's a principal in the Western Public Schools, put together a session called Effective Communication, and it was all around using technology tools efficiently and effectively to communicate with your external and internal stakeholders, in the spirit of transparency and letting everybody understand what's happening in your school and in your community. So we had a session that was pretty, again, pretty packed, and it was all about being efficient and not overstimulating the public with too many tools at once, because that's where a lot of us feel we are nowadays. You know, the superintendent just talked about tweeting. We're all tweeting and using websites and using blogs, and LinkedIn and Facebook and every other possible toy we can play with. But, you know, when is enough, or when is it too much, and when can people get communication overload? And so that was kind of the point of our session, is to be able to do it effectively and efficiently. And then in closing, just to let you know that along with our presenters, we also had seven LMS faculty members who actually attended the conference as attendees. And we had veterans go, and we had first and second-year teachers go, and just to get them to go and learn from other seasoned professionals and to come back every year and be excited about what they took away from the conference. And for me to then do classroom walkthroughs a month later and to see, wow, so-and-so is trying something that they just learned at a conference, is a fascinating thing. So, you know, we've been through different versions of professional development support in this district over the years, and one of the changes that has happened over the past few years is that allotment for teachers to be able to use the money flexibly for conferences as well as graduate programs. And I think this is a prime example to be held up as a model of success. This is a great opportunity. Had we not changed that model, you know, teachers would have had to pay out of pocket, or we would have been tweaking budget in a different way to get this many people to go out and really learn. So I'm proud of the teachers who presented, really happy that the district could allow seven other people to go, and proud of the fact that, you know, we're one of 35 schools, quite honestly, that has that distinction as a spotlight school. And we'll keep working hard and moving forward. So that's about all I have.
Does anyone have anything to add to that, or?
Well, just as we continue to transform our district, it's really rewarding to see our staffs going out and doing presentations at the national and international level. Takes a lot of time to organize a presentation. Our teachers are already very busy, but they see the merit in doing that, and they're making great connections. And not just connections in Massachusetts, but they're making global connections. So just kudos to everybody that continues to expand their horizons in terms of education and taking those kinds of risks. We have a number of teachers that are doing that every year. We have a couple of faculty that are tying into universities in the summertime now and helping co-teach courses in technology and science and various other topics. So very proud of our staff.
Does anybody have comments or questions, Alex?
Yeah, it's a great, I remember hearing about the conference last year and I think in previous years, you told us about it. And it's great that we are seeing more and more teachers, our teachers teaching teachers, which is excellent. It's a great way to learn from a colleague, learn from others in the industry, take practices back, and also to, I think it benefits us, even if we exclude the own learning that our presenters and that our attendees are doing, which is hard to do, because whether they sit in a session or just if they're part of our tech team and are presenting all day, they're learning too.
Right.
Even though they're not attending someone else's workshop, they're learning too. But even if we exclude all that, I think it's beneficial to Littleton, because as our ideas and our best practices trickle through different school districts in New England, someone else might say, oh, have you tried changing it this way? Or I was trying to reach a kid on this issue and wasn't able to. And then I used your practice and changed it a little bit. Have you ever thought about that? And then those ideas can come back to our teachers, and it's a great way to continue to innovate and best practices in teaching. So it's excellent to see so much involvement. So thank the teachers for us. I'm sure you have already, but thank them again, because it's a big time commitment, but I think it really helps us. The only question I would have, I guess, is when the teachers come back, is there any opportunity, I know staff meeting would be very busy, but is there any opportunity for them to debrief, not just with each other, but with the rest of their team?
Yeah, so another one of the great things we've done the past couple of years is we have the site-based professional development model, which we're immersed in now with the last six early release days, where the teachers develop the modules and the sessions. So many times, they'll come back from a conference such as this one, and it will lead to them to either create a session for this year's Site-Based PD or for next year's. And the tech team has already talked me into giving up a couple of staff meetings coming up that'll be less business-like and more training, so that they can take some of the sessions that they did at NELMs and do them with the entire middle school faculty, instead of little pockets of them, so that we can all hear the same message. Yeah, it's really important, actually, that you don't just keep that in your own classroom, that you open it up a little bit.
Because a big investment and a great gain to the people who attend.
Right.
And spread that belief even better.
And what I didn't say earlier is the presenters, one of the perks of this particular conference is if you present, you actually get to attend that day for free. So all of the nine people that I mentioned earlier who got to present at the conference, they get the benefit of then attending one of the other eight concurrent sessions, all of the other eight concurrent session times, other than the one that they're presenting in. So, you know, not only do we have seven people go, but overall, you know, we've got 16 of them attending, which is pretty cool.
Bless you.
Bless me.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Well, it sounds great. I think that they should increase the sales percentage that you get for commission. Must be good.
I'm a good PR guy.
Yeah. No, I think it's great, like what Alex was, you know, adding onto what Alex was saying, it's sort of like adding, you know, we like to talk about the proof that where we're spending money is being effective, and, you know, if, I don't know what the selection criteria is, but if what we're doing, that we were to have, was it eight, nine, how many faculty did we have that were?
We did nine presenters.
So nine presenters. That essentially means that we have nine people who are doing such great things in our schools that they've been selected to share that with so many other people. So I think that's really a testament, not just that they did it and learned themselves, but, you know, it's sort of proof that what we're doing is working and getting out there. And then Alex's question was the one that I wanted to know, which is, how is that then bouncing back to us if we're investing in? And so I guess as a follow-up question, the presentations that our nine presenters gave, do they give those throughout the district as well? Because I assume it's probably translatable, some of them.
Yeah, so for example, the Flipped Classroom is actually a session that is being led at Littleton Middle School during our site-based model right now, and we have, and then we have some, and then the Google, Using Google in the Classroom. We have two teachers at the middle school who are leading a session called Using Google Classroom. So they are happening to some extent, probably not all nine of them, but I would bet probably half of them are.
Right.
And we have that full-day PD day now in the fall, and that gives us a great opportunity to offer in-service to all four schools with our staff.
Yeah, it makes sense that if you're spending, like you were saying, it takes time to make these presentations, so it would be worthwhile, obviously, to give it to the audience for free while we have them.
Do they film the NELMs presentations?
No.
You have to think about that. Flip your own classroom.
Yeah.
Flip a flip classroom.
We joked about flipping them ourselves, yeah.
All right. I'd like to echo what both the other members said, was that there's obviously a benefit to our district by virtue of having our teachers presenting. And one is by virtue of creating a presentation, they're critiquing their own practices.
Right.
And getting sharper and better at understanding why something is working and being able to articulate that, I think is meaningful to that particular teacher. And then being able to come back and share that, you know, both formally and informally, there's a tremendous benefit. So while, obviously, in a given day, it has an impact on the district, I think the rewards we get back more than payback, pay it back. So, you know, I would encourage us to keep, you know, participating in these types of exercises, and there's no reason not to. And, you know, I think it's great that we have, you know, both presenters and other people there learning as well. So, you know, because as good as we may be, there's obviously always more alternatives, more opportunities to see how to tweak it and get better, and so it's good to know we're taking advantage of that. So as Alex said, thank them for their time and effort, and we appreciate the fact that we're going to get payback on that. So, very good. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right. All right, are we all set now?
Yeah, I think we are.
Are we ready for Best Buddies?
We have, John, you may.
Yeah, I have a few extra students.
Yeah. It certainly doesn't match my list, so having said that.
I wrote it down for you.
Or you can introduce them, that's fine. Last year, we had a request from both staff and students to form a Best Buddies program at our high school. We've had a Best Buddies program at our middle school for a number of years, and it was really, really rewarding to have that request come to us, rather than a group of leaders or leadership team going back to the school and suggesting that they build a program. So we put it in place last year. This is the second year of its inception, and I've been witness to a lot of great things that I've seen, actually today at our Council on Aging luncheon, it's a prime example. And I'd just like to commend our staff and students for moving forward with that program. And tonight, we have a number of students and are actually, one of our high school case teachers with us this evening. And John, I'm not going to steal your thunder now, I'll have you do the introductions.
Okay, great. It's especially nice to present to you tonight the Best Buddies, because it's Autism Awareness Month, and I think they're going to speak to that as well. We have with us student presenters Carrington Kivlin, Jamie Barth, Maggie Mori, and Erin Sullivan. Is there anyone else that I've missed? Okay, and their teacher, one of the teachers in the Case Collaborative Program is with us tonight, Nancy Taylor. I said, I see Deanne Sofalo, one of the directors of the Case Collaborative Program, is with us here tonight, too. So without further ado, I'll ask the students to come up, and Nancy can accompany them. Thank you.
I'm Nancy Taylor, and first I want to thank Dr. Harrington for inviting us to come tonight and update what Best Buddies has accomplished over the past year when we became an official chapter. And for those of you who aren't familiar with what Best Buddies is, in 1988, Anthony Kennedy Shriver had a mission that everybody would have a best friend regardless of their ability level. And so at the high school, we have these amazing young men and women who are spearheading this program and just really showing other people that regardless of your likes or dislikes, your ability levels, that everybody can embrace one another and accept each other. And so for tonight, Jamie's going to be giving us some information over the past year, along with Carrington, over the events that they have hosted for fundraising and for social events. And Maggie is going to be sharing her experience by going to the Best Buddies International Conference last year in Indiana. And Erin is going to be sharing what it has meant to her to be part of Best Buddies over the past year.
Hi, I'm Jamie Barth, and I'm a junior at Littleton High School and one of the officers for the Best Buddies program.
I'm Carrington Kivlin, and I'm a freshman and a peer buddy in the Best Buddies Club. We are not just a club that meets once a week. We have a mission to allow our peers with intellectual disabilities to have friendships and care and agree.
I can honestly say that Erin, along with all the other kids, are some of my best friends. They have taught me how to be caring, compassionate, and how to be a great friend in return.
Best Buddies is like my second family. Seeing the kids, seeing the kids and hanging out with them makes my day so much better. Best Buddies has changed my output on life and makes me learn to appreciate the little things in life.
We are so lucky that our school has been so tolerant and kind to everyone, to every one of the buddies. To be honest, some of those kids have a lot more friends than I do at the high school. We have been working really hard to ensure that this club will continue to grow, so, and so others can appreciate it. So we are doing some fundraising.
We have been doing this by fundraising and promoting the club as much as possible. One big fundraiser we did was the Best Buddies Second Annual Movie Night. On a Friday in December, we invited everyone to come to the middle school free of charge and watch the nightmare before Christmas.
We sold pizza and baked goods, and it was really successful and a blast for everyone. Along with bake sales and raffles, we have been working to have fundraisers once a month. Our biggest, though, was the talent show.
In the beginning of February, we held the first annual LHS Talent Show. Students from the high school got to perform their selected talents and with the live audience, and our judges were Mr. and Mrs. Kivlin and Mrs. Harvey.
The most rewarding part of that night was not all the money we raised, but the smiles on everyone's face, especially our buddies. Each of the buddies got to go on stage and introduce the acts. At the end of the night, we asked the audience and the buddies to come up on stage for a dance party.
When you looked on the stage, you'd see groups of people dancing, but you saw one big group, and that's what Best Buddies is actually for. Seeing how happy these kids were was not worth any amount of money.
We are raising money, not just for the Best Buddies program, but in a goal that I, along with our Vice President Emily Sullivan, who is currently at her rehearsal for the play, to go to the University of Indiana this July for a Best Buddies Leadership Conference. In order for Best Buddies to continue and to grow and succeed, we must be well-educated on how to handle certain situations and how to learn more about how we personally can make it better, and that's what this leadership conference will do. Our president Maggie went last year and gained so much from the experience, so here's Maggie to tell you about it. Thank you.
So in order to be an official Best Buddies chapter, it's required that a chapter officer attend the International Best Buddies Conference each year to renew their membership. As this year's chapter president, I was given the amazing opportunity to travel to Indiana University for the conference last July. At the conference, I attended a number of presentations, workshops, and events led by student leaders in the programs, actress Lauren Potter, disability rights advocates, and the CEO, Anthony Kennedy Shriver. The amount that I was able to take away from this conference is absolutely incomprehensible. From just three days, I ended up filling over half of a standard-sized notebook full of ideas and strategies for things like fundraisers, group dynamics, peer buddy relationships, gaining members, and so many more things that have proven to be essential to the functioning of our chapter. But I was also able to take away a number of things that just you can't write down in a notebook. Upon arriving at the conference, I was put in this massive group of people, none of which I'd ever met. The communication skills and confidence that I gained from connecting with these people were absolutely incredible, and I was really able to use them in our chapter. In addition, we were able to exchange ideas, stories, and strategies with each other. Hearing how the other students ran their chapters has been so unbelievably helpful this year. What was most important to me through this conference wasn't the fundraising ideas or the new ideas for group bonding, although they were amazing, but the inspiration that I got from it, by seeing and hearing firsthand what Best Buddies International has accomplished, gave me the confidence that even our small chapter of 12 people can do amazing things. The founder of Best Buddies, Anthony Kennedy Shriver, has frequently said that the vision of Best Buddies is to put Best Buddies out of business, meaning that he wants the world to be such a great place for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities, that Best Buddies isn't necessary anymore. After going to the conference, I truly believe that someday, Best Buddies will be out of business, and our chapter, and along with so many others, will be responsible. Thank you. Here's Erin.
Hi, I'm Erin Sullivan, and being an awesome member of Best Buddies is knocking experience for me. My favorite experience was the Best Buddies Movie Night at the middle school. Being a member of Best Buddies- Being a member of Best Buddies makes me so special in my heart. However, it taught me how to make new friends and being so kind to others. And best of all, I'm learning how to be a best friend to others at high school.
Questions or comments? Alex?
Yeah, I remember last year, we had a Best Buddies Program and we were talking about trying to send someone to the conference and I'm so glad that we were able to go. I think a couple of months before that, I went to a CPAC meeting and it was my first CPAC meeting and we had some students then trying to create the Best Buddies Program to get that recognition, to be an official chapter. And we obviously know the impact, we've heard about the impact they're having in the school, but I also just want to commend the students. This is student-driven and there's so much time and effort on top of everything else that you of course are probably having to do every day as a high school student and so much extra work that you're taking on to make this happen. So thank you. That's pretty incredible and it's having a really meaningful difference.
You guys did such a great job. It's very impressive. I know when I was your age, I could not have spoken up there as eloquently as you guys did. I would have been much more nervous. I still am nervous talking. I did something similar when I was in high school. We had a peer mentor program, so it's slightly, it's not really quite the exact same thing, but I know the feeling of like getting involved with another student and how, you know, attached you can become to doing work like that. So I just urge you, are you all, are you guys juniors, seniors, freshmen?
Junior, freshman, sophomore, senior.
All right, so you guys will be with us for a little bit longer, but then, you know, when you go off into college or wherever you go on next, just encourage you to keep doing things like that. I think you'll find it more fulfilling as you keep going on. And now if people want to get involved, how would they do that? Do you guys have?
Well, anybody's welcome to join Best Buddies at the high school and the middle school. And we have, and if anybody wants to come, we have many events like the movie night, like the talent show that people can come to and support us and donate and really see like what Best Buddies is about.
If you'd like to know more about the fundraisers, we tend to try to publicize them throughout the district, but we also have a Facebook page if you search LHS Best Buddies, which we post about the fundraisers, so if you ever want to stop by one.
You guys did do great. It was very meaningful and informative to us. We have a lot of presentations throughout the year and they're mostly boring and hard to read. And they're not about as cool things as you guys are talking about. They're meaningful in their own way and they're very necessary, but it's a lot more fun for us and more meaningful to us when we have students here showing us both in what you had to say and in the way you went about saying it, your capabilities in presenting it. It helps us understand what's going on in the district and it makes us realize that there are a lot of great things going on. And Mike sort of echoed, I'm going to echo some of what he said. You're going to find that a lot of what you guys do outside the classroom in the building is going to be more impactful to you over the course of your life than maybe some of the things you actually learned in the classroom. So it's great that you're taking advantage of it and some of it is reflective in the formal aspects of you doing the fundraising, the organizing, all that kind of things, but I think for this particular program, you can see just the social relationships and the ability to realize that there are, you know, other things to think about beyond studying and classwork and that it's as meaningful as anything else you're going to do. I think it's a great experience for you guys and I have no question in my mind that you guys are going to be fine once you get beyond, you know, Littleton High School. So great job. Thank you for coming in. I'm sure we'll hear more about Best Buddies as we go. It sounds like it's got a lot of momentum, so, you know, take advantage of it and keep us posted. Thank you. We think we have enough people here to take care of our business with the Neshoba Valley Technical High School appointment. This is a joint appointment between the school committee, the board of selectmen, and the town moderator, and I believe it is the town moderator who drives this bus.
Excellent. Come on up and get behind the wheel.
I don't want to be too picky in terms of formality, but we should move out of public session.
Yes, right. Well, I figured Tim's very good. I was pretty sure he was going to let us know that we need to move out of.
And then we'll go back into public session after this is done.
All right. So we do need to do that, right, Tim? We need to move out of our, during our meeting temporarily?
And we need to meet as the nominating committee, which is the selectmen, the school committee, and the moderator.
So can I get a motion from you guys to?
Recede?
To, yeah, recess with the intention of coming back into session.
Do it. I make a motion that we recess for the purpose of the appointment, of the intention of coming back into open session.
Second.
Okay, motion made a second. Call is in favor.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're done.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Almost. And so they actually set what each minimum spending that each town puts forth to support the tech school. And one of the interesting things is that we rely on Chapter Seventy as much as any other school district does. And because for so many years, we were just meeting net school spending, because we were charging the towns the minimum allowed by the state, we were actually losing money on the other end from Chapter Seventy because we weren't meeting net school spending. So this year, the Budget Subcommittee actually came up seven percent to meet net school spending, which was a small bump to Littleton and spread out over eight cities and towns. It's not too critical. Some of the things that we've done over the last three years, we built a new sports complex with turf, lights, at no cost to any of the cities and towns that are represented in the district. The money came from school choice funds that we had saved and put away. Some of the other things that we've been able to do is we've just done a new gym floor and bleachers, spray booth for the auto collision. We're in the middle of an MSBA program for roof repairs. We're introducing biotechnology. We've added the Engineering Academy through a Mass Life Science Grant Award of over $200,000. And our students just finished our new dance and art studio. We're going to be offering dance and art to our students also. We are probably out of the 29 vocational districts in the state, we are ranked 29th in student spending. Our cost per student is, I want to make sure I get this number right. Because it kind of gives you the idea that we're actually trying to do the right thing. We have a total of 733 students, and our cost per pupil is $16,152.14 per student. And I think right now, Littleton's about, what, $12,000, $13,000 per student. And out of all of the districts, out of all of the vocational schools across the state, there are 29. We are ranked 29th for student spending. And I'll give you an example of Old Colony, which has 731 students. Their per pupil spending is about $27,000. So we really try to do the right thing and hold the line as far as expenditures and try to work with the towns. The other thing I'd like to say is that I'd like to thank the superintendent and our middle school principal. There's been a great working relationship with Littleton. And some school districts look at Neshoba Tech as competition. It's taking school dollars out of the budget. And I like to say that Littleton has certainly supported all of the programs that we offer for our middle schoolers. We really appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I got one question, Charlie. Why do you think the decrease in the attendance for Littleton?
That's a question that we've talked about for quite a while. We're not sure. We're offering some really good courses. I think one of the things that's happened through the years is that stigma of vocational. And I often liken that to the last time you took your car to a garage to have it fixed, what did that cost you? So, I mean, people with a good vocational training really do really well, I mean, as far as income. Let's see. Neshoba Tech now offers 10 approved advanced placement courses in addition to many honors classes. We're the only technical high school to do that in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, so we've stepped up our academic program. We also are associated with Lowell State, two of the community colleges, and we have a few students going off on dual enrollments. And last year, I think we had nine students graduate with dual enrollments. So that's pretty impressive for vocational school. We've certainly upped our ante as far as our educational process. And Neshoba Tech has 100% passage of MCAS for the past 10 years, and 100% of passage in ELA, and 99% passage in math. And this is on the 10th grade students, their first attempt. So we've really upped our game and trying to forge forward so that... We realize that a lot of students were going to go, want to go into their own business at some point in time, whether it's contracting or whatever they want to do. And you really need to have a good foundation on the academic side also. So we've changed our motive of learning and going forward. And hopefully, some people out there will hear this tonight and say, wow, that's pretty good. And maybe we'll get some more students from Littleton. But it's not that, certainly not that these two gentlemen haven't supported the recruitment efforts on our part.
Mr. Ellis, if you don't mind, I think it's important, that number that Charlie mentioned is total Littleton kids in four years.
Yeah.
And so what we do at the middle school is we kind of track the ebb and flow out of every eighth grade class. And so some years it's eight or nine, some years it's 10 or 12. It's really dependent on the makeup of that particular grade at that time. Sometimes you get a pocket of kids who are interested in certain trades or certain career paths earlier, and then the next year, you don't have that capacity. So I think, yeah, if you look at that number from 50 to 33, it looks like a giant drop. But I think if we look at the eighth grade kids every year, what we talk about, and Ms. Dorfman, our counselor does a lot of this work within the Neshoba Tech counseling team, we want to make sure that kids who go there, it's the right kids. They absolutely want to go there for the right reason, and this is the path they want to take. But some years, that number's going to be up, and some years, it's going to be down. So I think what's more important to me is that every eighth grader leaves Littleton Middle School and goes where they appropriately should go, and the tech is one of those great options for them.
Thank you.
It's really indicative of the size of our grades. If we had 400 students or 500 students in each grade, I think you would see a greater consistency. But we have an average of 130 students per grade. So you're going to get that ebb and flow as students move through because the demographics are different?
Yeah. And some of those demographics are, Air has 57 students, Charlesford 185, Groton 39, Littleton 33, Pepperle's 159, Shirley's 85, Townsend's 94, and Westford's 52. And, I mean, the Finance Committee kind of likes the 33 students because the impact of the budget is a little less. We'd like to see it more, obviously. I think the assessment for this year to the town of Littleton's about $475,000, whereas the assessment to Charlesford with 185 students is $2.818 million. But it's something that we're working on, and it's a collaboration. We really appreciate that.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, it's no question, Charlie. I just want to thank you for your years of service. And I think we're lucky to have someone as qualified as you, sitting on this board for the number of years. And this chairman, bring the experience over to there so you know both sides and how the whole thing runs. And I just want to thank you for your years of service and hope you continue.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Joe. It's had its challenges.
Yep. I'll give both of you guys a shot. I'd like to echo that. And I'd also like to say, based on, you know, the brief comments you made tonight, the amount of energy and commitment you have invested in Neshoba Tech is apparent. It just jumps right out at us. Correct me if I'm wrong, an alumni of Neshoba Valley Tech?
Yes, I am. I'm not going to tell you though when I graduate.
Well, you said it's the 45th year, so I was going to start scratching some math out, but I stopped.
With the math, and we'll talk about that later. I am actually a member of the first graduating class. First graduating class.
Really?
Yeah.
That's great.
So thank you for that, Mike. Go ahead.
Yeah. Do you happen to know the percentage of students who matriculate out of Neshoba into post-secondary?
I do. A graduating class last year, we had nine students, I believe, going to the military, whether it was Air Force, Marines, Army. We had, I'm going to say, 16 go directly into the workforce. And most of those were going to work with dads or moms in businesses that were already established. And the rest either went to a two- or four-year college.
What's the total graduating class roughly at Neshoba Valley Tech?
100, maybe 130, a big class. So it's not too far off. I think the high school has, what, 700 kids here? So it's not too far off.
Is that on par with other vocational schools?
Excuse me?
Is that on par with other vocational, the percentage of people who are going straight to the workforce versus?
Actually, we're pretty high.
Yeah, sounds like it.
We're pretty high. Part of that is setting the standards and setting the bar, which, you know, some kind of tough to do, but I think it also works with the relationship you have with the town that you're representing. And as was mentioned earlier, you know, the amount of work that goes into the kids coming to us, it's quite involved as far as getting the placement right. And the freshman year, I mean, they transfer to different shop areas. They have four or five to pick from. We want to make sure that what they're doing is best suits them also. So we invest heavily in that, in that programming.
Just one more question. Not about your qualifications, you're obviously very qualified, but for my own benefit, because I haven't been around here long enough to learn it all. What kind of outreach, or what do we do as far as making the middle schoolers aware of what option might be available to them? I know in some countries, like in Europe and Germany, they pretty directly steer students if they think that they'd be better off in vogue versus in a traditional high school. And I'm not saying that's a good idea, but I'm curious, like, are they aware of that?
We actually work with the principal and the middle school and the superintendent. And we set up a day where students from the Littleton Middle School eighth grade can come and visit us. We have a couple of summer programs that we have. We have some students who come to the summer programs for robotics or something else that may still mainstream through a normal high school. And that's great, too. You know, I think any experience you can give a student to broaden their knowledge base and keep them empowered to go forward is the best thing to do.
They come to us, too.
Yeah, and vice versa.
They come to us first to give the entire eighth grade the show. And then, based on that and with conversation with their families, they decide which of those kids are really going to go for the full day tour over the school. So we give everybody that access to see what the difference, different options are. And I think that's what Ms. Ellis was alluding to. I'm not sure every school happens to do it that way, but I think that's a benefit that Littleton kids get.
We try to do it that way. We try to do that. But again, I think Littleton is a unique town because I really believe that Littleton has always been driven with education, at least when I was on the board. Students always came first. And I think that shows still today with their support of Neshoba Tech as an adjunct to what's going on here with traditional education. So it's a great mix.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me, Ellis. It's not germane really to your appointment, but since you have the pulpit right now, do you want to go a little bit about postgraduate education in the Neshoba Valley office?
Absolutely. We also offer postgraduate courses for seniors who have graduated high school, and they can come in for a two-year period where they're not so much the academics, but they're actually getting the technical aspects of it. And that really is such an opportunity. And sometimes we try to market that and get students involved in that. Not everyone is geared for college. They really aren't. And some students are going to a two-year college, but at the same time, you know, they have a business plan in their mind, and they really want to get some technical background behind them, whether it's engineering or sustainable living, we have a new program starting on that, or vet tech, or any of those, banking and marketing, any of those programs that we run, they're eligible to come in for two years and actually participate as a student in the vocational areas. So it's a unique opportunity, and really, more people should take advantage of it. So.
I want to start by repeating what Joe has said about serving for so long. Three years now in Neshoba Tech?
Actually, this is my second appointment, and I filled in for two years. So I've been there about, I think, five.
Five total.
Wow. Thank you for that. Those academic, the academic programs, you said, have really been bolstered. Those are some impressive numbers. And being able to do that and still sustain the VOTech aspect is very impressive and very rare.
It hasn't been easy.
Yeah.
We have a great staff, as was alluded to this evening. You know, really, you're as good as your staff is, you know. And you can have all the bells and whistles, but you need people on the ground doing the job and doing it right. And when I say doing it right, engaging the students. You know, you can talk to anybody, but you have to engage students, and that's the real trick, is to engage them and keep them occupied and keep them interested in what they're doing. So.
And then in terms of where the funding comes from, I know here, we split with the state. We don't get very much to Chapter Seventy. This district doesn't. So most of it will come from the towns. In terms of Neshoba Tech's funding, do you know what that breakdown might be roughly between state support versus what comes from the cities and towns or from the towns?
Well, if they get their budget straight on the state level.
Yeah, I guess.
Am I right?
You're right.
It's funny, you know, the town could put a budget together, and we're still waiting for state numbers. As far as the tech school goes, our Chapter Seventy is probably, and I'm going to say this, maybe a million coming in from Chapter Seventy. We do get relief as far as transportation costs, but that's been cut this year, so we will have to make that up.
Both with the nine seat cuts and with the proposed budget?
Yeah. So it's, you know, most of the minimum increase comes from the towns. And of course, each year, the state raises that minimum increase. So yes, we may not get a lot of Chapter Seventy, but the state mandates, or DOE mandates, the minimum from each town.
So $1 million ballpark out of a $30 million budget?
Yeah, it's probably a little more. I don't know the number off the top of my head, but it's probably a little more.
But it's pretty slim, yeah.
So we get some relief as far as transportation, although that was cut this year. Last year, I think, because of Chapter Seventy and trying to keep our minimum assessment to the towns as close as we could, we were whacked by the Department of Ed about $90,000 because we did not meet minimum spending. So this year, we've taken some funds out of school choice, and we're going to try to augment some of that to, for spending directly to the students for student services. So we're hoping to make some of that up and get above minimum spending this year.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate your willingness to continue to serve the town in this capacity. With that, I'll entertain a motion to reappoint Charlie Ellis to the Neshoba Valley District School Committee for a term to expire March 31, 2018.
So moved.
So moved for a second. Any discussion? If not, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor of reappointing Mr. Ellis, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moderator votes aye as well. So they have eight votes, four selectmen, three school committee, and the moderator, all in favor, Mr. Ellis is reappointed. Thank you very much. If I could prevail upon you, Superintendent Clancy, to communicate to Superintendent Klimkowitz that we've reappointed Mr. Ellis.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
I make a motion after, can you reopen it's session?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And I think the next thing we have is old business draft calendar. And then I also see under the superintendent's report, the proposed calendar. Is that the same, more or less the same thing?
One is the school district calendar, and the other one is a calendar of meetings.
Oh, okay. Oh, I got you. I got you. Got you, got you. School meetings. All right. All right. So let's do the draft calendar for the school year, which affects everybody, students, families, teachers, staff. What do we got?
Well, this isn't the first time we've brought the calendar to you. And through continued deliberations, we met with the LEA in advisory capacity. And the calendar looks identical, with the exception of the professional development days put in as to the last one we brought. What we did, what we tried to do is make sure that if we had a holiday on a week, that we tried to steer clear of a half-day professional development. I have to tell you, though, there's two schools of thought out there. Some districts, some superintendents prefer to maximize the number of five-day weeks. And as a result, they deliberately put professional development.
Five full days, five full-day weeks.
Right.
Versus?
It's an intentional mapping out of the calendar. We were asked to do something a little different, so we tried to not put half-day PD when we had a natural holiday during that week. So we were fairly successful with that. It won't ever be 100%, just because of other variables that we have to take into consideration. We're going to offer professional development. It needs to be timely. And it, sometimes it's iterative in terms of the professional development that we're giving. So we're very pleased with this calendar. And as a superintendent, I'm very pleased that our last day of classes would be June 24. And...
If we use all five snow days?
If we use all five snow days. If not, it would be June 17. The alternative to going after Labor Day would have probably made me lose a little more sleep next year because it was, our school year was finishing off so late. So we're very pleased with the calendar. And we'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you for doing your best to schedule the professional development on those weeks where there is not also a holiday or another half-day for another reason. We all know how important they are, but we've also heard how difficult that can be for parents sometimes. So that intentional placing of that, I think, is very, very meaningful. I also remember last year, more of a, less important, if I remember last year, we decided to go into this format where we have the calendar presented as such, and then on the backside of that same piece of paper, the different dates. I think that still makes a lot of sense. I think Chuck brought that up maybe last year. And I think it's a good move. So I like this calendar. I think we've had a lot of discussion on it. I won't belabor any of those points, but I think we put in a lot of deliberation, a lot of good work, and did the best that we can with a, you know, very limited number of days.
Yeah, I guess I don't have any questions. I think we did pretty much most of the heavy lifting last meeting. But, you know, this will be a new experience for the town to start school before Labor Day. So I hope that you report back to us with the climate that you received with back in September, and so we can see how this model works going forward.
I think also it'll take a while longer, but we should also think about how it feels to, hopefully, we have a more mild winter, to see what it feels like for the staff and the students to finish a little earlier than we have been the last several years. This is the latest that Labor Day can be, but it's been late for the last couple of years, late-ish, just keeps moving forward. We'll get some relief because we sort of finished out that cycle, and then, you know, it'll cycle back as the years go by. So it'll be interesting to see on both ends, beginning and the end of the school year, how we feel as a district that it goes. I'd like to thank the LEA for understanding what we're all going through and working with the administration staff to craft the calendar. We had a great public input session. I think that we did a good job of understanding what the concerns of the community were, but also we were able to communicate what our concerns were as a district relative to the calendar. We talked last time, you're right, Mike, we did most of the heavy lifting and kind of knew what the outcome was going to be. This is just a more putting in the professional development days and locking this down so that we can get it out there, so that the families and staff can plan for the next year. But one thing we did talk about the last time we met was continuing to dialogue about the calendar early next year to see if there are other opportunities for positively impacting the district and the students and the staff. And there were some interesting ideas that were put out there that we'll talk about again. So even though we're done with this one, and I think we crafted as decent a solution as we could, given the circumstances, I'm looking forward to an opportunity to leverage off of that energy and continue to have some talks about this in the very reasonably near future, and seeing if we can continue to think about the calendar in a way that is meaningful to the town and the students. So it was a good process and a good effort, and we'll continue to take advantage of that energy and move forward with it.
Yeah, well, I guess I just have a question for us, I guess. How are we going to, we talked about if, you know, some of the recommendations we got involved, adjusting the spring vacation schedules, and we talked about collaborating with, you know, the surrounding districts to make sure that, obviously, if we were going to consolidate to one week, that we would try and do it in concert with these other districts. Do we have a plan to? Yeah, that's the type of thing that's going to have to happen. We talked about it's going to happen. It's going to take at least two years to do. I'm not saying that we ought to do that or not, but do we, how do we keep this in the?
It'll be a topic on summer retreat that we have. Collaborating with other districts, I haven't heard of any other district in our area considering changing the winter vacation schedules. So if the wish of the school committee is we explore that as a district, my recommendation would be that we send out a survey and see what our public thinks and our staff thinks about entertaining those options. I mean, we all have our own personal thoughts. On this, our leadership team will definitely have some thoughts. Some of us have experience with a single break. I do, as a principal and a superintendent. So those discussions will be helpful as we try to figure out what the best situation or best approach would be to this community.
Yeah, I want to be clear, I'm in no way advocating that we should be doing that or doing anytime soon, but it just seems like the type, I've been on plenty of these boards and things where we bring up an idea that we're going to talk about, but it easily gets put on the back burner, which I just wanted to talk about.
And so we'll talk about, you're thinking about putting it on the agenda?
For sure.
For the workshop in August. And then I think we talked last meeting that if we are going to contemplate any significant changes, that we need to start thinking in September and October in order to be able to implement in that year, you know, the following year, or possibly the year after. So I think that's what we should stick to, is that kind of game plan. And again, you hit the nail on the head, though. We're not advocating for any, we may not change anything, you know, but we will go through the process so that we understand if we don't make a change, why we're choosing not to change. And some of it may be considerations that go beyond our district, and, you know, we'll find out. But I think we got the ideas that, you know, we've talked about it, we think it's important enough. We haven't done it in the recent past, so now's a good time to start thinking about it again. We did have an effort a few years ago, but I think we've gone far enough down the line now to think about it again. And, you know, it bubbles up, not just in the district, but, you know, ideas do bubble up across the Commonwealth. So I think we have a good enough game plan to keep it moving forward with plenty, plenty of work and dialogue, both internally as a school committee and the admin team, the admin team themselves, and then obviously as a community. This is one of those hot button issues that people are going to want to have a lot of input on, and we will afford that opportunity as we move forward. All right, but for purposes tonight, we do want to approve the calendar?
Right. And just to reinforce what Alex said, we created a syllabus to make sense of our symbolism, so to speak. And as the leadership team knows very well, I love geometry, so I try to introduce different symbols every time we talk about the calendar. As you can see, I haven't succeeded yet because it's still fairly plain in terms of geometric symbols, but it does what it needs to do.
All right. So can I get a motion to approve the calendar?
Motion to accept the draft calendar for the 2015, 2016 school year.
Second.
Motion is made in second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? All right. We have a new calendar for the upcoming school year.
Excellent. A number of parents will be very happy out there. They're already organizing their calendar events for next year.
All right. Superintendent's report.
Under the first section, we have the school committee proposed meeting calendar. And it's very similar to last year's. And I hope you've had the chance to compare it to the calendar, the school year calendar. And we did a pretty good job of trying to balance our meetings throughout the year. Public hearing a little earlier than last year, but only by a few days.
Comment on issues on that? All right. Do we need to formally?
Please. A motion to adopt is presented.
I'll make a motion that we accept the school committee calendar for July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2016, as presented.
Second.
Sorry. There's no help on the left.
Yeah.
Motion is made in second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Power on the side of the table, Mr. Ellis. The motions.
All right. We've got to keep track of our motions we made. Make these two guys carry the weight. carry the weight over there next time till they can jump.
So Chuck's doing the policy motions next time.
There you go. That sounds fair.
That's only fair. Next item, next meeting, we'll have our yearly slideshow ready. And our slideshow, if you recall, we implemented that four years ago and it highlights our schools and it's, as I've always said, a picture says a thousand words. And right now, we're trying to decide on the music again. That seems to be our biggest deliberation in terms of the various genres of music that we're going to take a look at. So I'm excited again to be able to show that to you next meeting and we'll also put it on LCTV prior to the public hearing on the budget. Food service update, I asked our business manager, Steve Mark, to put together something. Food services is always an area in any school budget that we watch very closely and it fluctuates. Our philosophy is that we make sure that our kids have good meals available to them. And if you're at our luncheon today, you were able to sample our food and I think we've continued to move forward in terms of creating foods that are not only healthy, but foods that our kids enjoy eating as well. Steve, I'll turn it over to you to explain your numbers that you have.
Okay, so there's a statement in the packet that you've had. This is, so to explain a little bit, this is on a cash basis. So it's actual cash in the door at a given point in time. That's how food service is done, it's on a cash basis. So this is through February 2015. Right now, the program is running at a $18,000 deficit for the year. However, don't panic, there's, the school committee appropriated in the budget $10,000 to help offset that. We don't tap into that until we get closer toward the end of the year and we decide if we need to tap into those funds. So that is out there. There's also some catering revenues that we build out that we haven't received the cash yet, so that's not included in these numbers as well. So if I forecast through the end of the year, it is going to be close. It's going to be a very tight year. Whether the program becomes self-sufficient or doesn't make a profit is a possibility. It could be, it could be in a deficit by, our estimate, maybe a couple of thousand dollars, over and above the $10,000 is already there. But we're working with the food service director and the kitchen managers to get the best product we can out there for the students and also to do it as efficiently as we can. So we're trying to keep costs down. We will, as we get toward the end of the year, we'll use up our inventory so we won't be buying as many products, so that will help as well. So we're watching this as we go and as we get closer to the end of the year, I'll be able to give, I think, a little bit better number and forecast where I think we're going to end the year. But right now, it's, it's close and it's possible that it could be a couple of thousand dollar deficit, which isn't bad.
So you're showing right now that we're running a roughly a $19,000 deficit, offset by the $10,000 we appropriated. So the forecasted net deficit is around 9,000, but you're saying that's going to, in all likelihood, go down?
Correct.
And it'll be, it won't be as much as 9,000, it may be zero.
Correct.
But it, the range is probably zero to a couple of thousand dollars.
Correct, because what happened, there's some, there's some catering revenue that's not accounted for in here that we know is going to come in.
Okay.
And as we get closer to the end of the year, we'll stop buying as much inventory so the supplies in the expense line won't be as high.
Okay.
As historically it's been in the prior months.
All right.
And you have to remember over the past, I don't know how many years, six, seven years, we've held the costs for what we charge for lunches. So naturally, it's going to be harder to balance the budget. We have an increase in food costs and increase in labor costs.
Federal government change of.
Federal requirements, so I think we've done very well when you take those.
That's a very good point. We have not raised our prices regardless of the pressures we've felt the last several years regarding the changes in the menu requirements. Food costs have gone up. They went up a few years ago apparently because, well, there were many reasons why they went up, but fuel costs were pressing. That's gone down really a little bit, but we also, because of the menu requirement changes, we also saw fewer meals being bought and eaten.
Right.
I'm sure we'll have some comments about that in a moment. But again, given all of that, we have not raised the price per meal, you know, which we could have easily done if we wanted to be reflexive. We weren't, you know, we worked hard to absorb it and you guys, the staff did a great job of reevaluating how to provide meals and staff requirements and efficiencies and things like that. So I think we've done, even though we have had to create this, this offset, you know, I think that it was the right thing to do given the circumstances and I think that as a district, we've done a good job of navigating it. These are pressures that all districts have faced. We're not out there, it's not like we've made mistakes or been caught unawares. In some ways, I think we've dealt with this much better than many, now, sometimes we're smaller, more nimble, I think that we have some advantages that some of the large, much larger districts don't necessarily have. But we, I think we've done a good job up to this point. So while the numbers may be a little bit sobering in terms of talking about deficits, they're not material relative to the overall budget, you know, I think the point is, is that, you know, we've done what we can up to this point and we're just going to continue to monitor the situation and.
And we'll continue to work on keeping costs down.
Guys, do you have any other comments?
Was this, was this unexpected? So I was trying to figure out what was causing the deficit. Is it mostly just increased in cost or is it like, is it a waste problem or buying too much or lower demand or is it mostly?
No, it's, it's.
Because I would think wouldn't.
It's an increase in cost. We're offering much more fresh fruits and vegetables and whole grains and those tend to be a little bit more expensive. We're also in a kind of a period where they're buying inventory, so they have it on hand to get us to the end of the year. So we're building up stocks and then we'll deplete those stocks as we go forward as well, so.
We have very little waste. Our kitchen staff are very creative in terms of creating meals from any extra food that they have, so. No, they're, they're really good at doing that.
Yeah. It's so, I wouldn't call it unexpected, but I don't, at this point in time, I don't think it's a huge concern.
Which is a different situation than when we were in last year, whereas sort of the first year, I think we really saw this problem, this problem wasn't just felt by this district, but by districts across the Commonwealth. In response to some of the healthier nutrition guidelines from the requirements from the state and from the federal government and then also the cost of food and fuel costs and that sort of thing, what I'm curious about is going forward, it is, it is new for us to be subsidizing this program with $10,000. Usually it's, it stands on its own. Because of those trends that we've seen across the state and because of what we saw last year, that's why we decided to appropriate the $10,000. My question is, it might be that we, that's a route we decide to take long term, but I would like us to be deliberate about that and to continue to talk about it. So I think these sort of presentations every couple of months are very helpful. I know we talked about this a lot during the summer session that we had in August of last year and I thought that was very valuable. I'm hoping that maybe we can do that again, if not during that session, then either towards the end of this year, during the school year or towards the beginning of next year, so that we're pretty deliberate about what's happening with this program. $10,000, you know, isn't a lot of money, but it is a break from what we have done over time and it's fine to do that, you know, on a case-by-case basis and maybe it's fine to do it long-term, but I want that to be a deliberate conversation that we have. And I think the most important way, well, one of the more important things that we could look at when we have that conversation, and I think I'm ill-equipped to have that now and I don't think it's, we need to have that conversation now, but when we do, I'd like to see what those other communities that were also struggling last year, to see how much they have changed over time and what they're doing with their programs, because I'm sure we're not alone this year, just as we weren't alone last year in this problem and seeing how they're adjusting and seeing, are we doing, are we recuperating faster? Are there, are there meals also, are kids also buying meals less in other school districts than ours? What can we, what can we do? And I know that John Overcash does some of that work already. But when we do have that discussion, if we decide to continue to supplement this budget, I think that would be good information to have.
Okay. Historically, in the recent past, we haven't budgeted an amount to offset any particular dip, potential deficits that food services has run. In the longer, if you look farther out in your time horizon, it was never designed, the food service was not designed to be a cost of, you know, a self-funding cost center. That is a relatively new concept that, you know, we and other districts have done because they do generate revenue, so there is an opportunity in theory to allow that to happen. And Littleton did a good job historically of taking advantage of that and they did run as a self-sustaining cost center for quite a while. I think the thing to keep in mind is, is that it may not be, and I think we're finding out, that it really isn't sustainable primarily because we don't have carte blanche in doing what we want to do in terms of what food we serve and what we charge. If we did, this would, we could solve this problem tomorrow, you know? We would just serve pizza and hamburgers and the kids would buy them off the shelf and we'd be making money hand or fist. It's called McDonald's and it's called Pizza Hut and we don't do that and we're not going to do that. I think that what we're realizing and the reason that we put this amount in here, starting at 10,000, and I could see us conceivably tweaking it up or down depending on the circumstances, is that the issues that the food service, all good issues, you know, some of them good, changing the meal requirements, trying to be healthier, more fresh food, all great ideas, very necessary, very admirable and worthwhile, and I think we should continue to strive for that. Fuel costs, I mean, there's nothing we can do about that, we just have to deal with it. But unless we're going to raise the prices, which becomes, it's not as simple as that because you get into the classic economic model, if we charge too much, we'll actually get less and the deficit will grow. So I think that, you know, we need to continue to have the updates and we need to think about it and I know that the staff is working on identifying, you know, more and more opportunities, but we will hit the wall conceivably at some point and realize we've done everything we can do, you know, we need to keep thinking about it, but given that fact, whether it's $10,000, $25,000 or $5, we just need to know that we're going to have to do that and just, you know, make as informed decisions as we can, you were right about that. But I think we're all seeing, and again, not just Littleton, we're seeing it across the nation, literally, that the idea of having a self-sustaining cost center is probably going to be difficult to achieve. And I think really the point will be is how close do we come? If we're coming a lot closer than other districts, then we're doing our job, our staff is doing their job and we're in as good a shape as we're going to be given the circumstances, I think that's what we should be striving for and not breaking our backs or, you know, impacting our students or the district negatively to attain a goal that may not be worthwhile anyway. So I think if we think about it like that, we'll do the best we can and I think we have been, I think we've been doing fine in terms of adjusting to a changing landscape. We just need to keep working as hard as we can.
You know, the Nutrition Council is sending us surveys to parents and trying to get feedback as far as, you know, ideas and things like that, so it's, it's being looked at from all approaches. There's a student group and the nutrition panel and John Overcash is the director as well.
I have a solution. If you want kids to buy the meals, tell them they have to make their own lunches at home. And as soon as you tell them that, that you're not going to make their lunch for them, they will buy every day, because I've seen that phenomenon.
But he pays for it.
Well, again, yeah, exactly, you know?
There's no such thing as a free lunch.
No, there's not.
It is, it is really an anomaly to have a cost neutral program in food services. You go, you look at statistics throughout the nation and 15, 20 years ago, districts were putting in significant dollars. So I think the district has done remarkably well for a number of years. There are no surprises. We knew we were going to have to put money into the program and it's just the way it is. We want our kids to be well-fed and we all know that that affects learning, so we're making sure that we provide that service for every child if they want it.
All right, anything else in the superintendent?
I've got a couple of things, if you wouldn't mind.
Thank you.
The, as you know, we've been working with UMass Lowell for a few months and I'd like to thank Mike for helping us secure some solid connections, so to speak. And we were able to strike a deal a couple of weeks ago and I just received an email yesterday from the vice provost. And we will be offering a introduction to nanotechnology course with a professor, a well-credentialed professor in nanotechnology and they will be offering this course to our students. It'll be a blended program. We'll have the professor actually come to our school for one day a week and the second day of class, more correctly, it'll be a blended class. We might transport our students to UMass Lowell to use their labs. They may do virtual, virtual lessons and we're also going to be utilizing grad students as part of the approach. So we're really excited about this. To my knowledge, it's only on other high school that has been able to secure that kind of deal, so we are paving a new road, so to speak. This is very different from dual enrollment. It's entirely different and I've talked to Principal Harrington and the guidance staff and the last three years, we've had five students be involved in dual enrollment. There's nothing wrong about that, but what's happened, we, you know, as a result of what we've done in our high school, we've expanded AP classes and that was methodical. But now I think we need to have more serious conversations with our students about those alternative routes in terms of doing dual enrollment. Dual enrollment, you apply to the state, as long as you meet the qualifications, you can take a course at a college or a university and depending on the socioeconomic situation, there's subsidies from 100% tuition to zero tuition. And that's something we really need to, I think, spend more time talking, talking with our students about. AP is a good, a good opportunity for kids to experience college-level classes, but certainly doesn't replace the college experience that can be gained from a dual enrollment. I think both of you were involved in dual enrollment when you were at LHS, if I remember correctly. So, and I've heard both of you speak very highly of your experiences when you were a high school student and was acted as a catalyst, so to speak, to decide what you were going to do after you finished high school. And I think that confidence and experience makes a big difference. College can be a pretty scary thing, although we're very fortunate in Massachusetts because our colleges are a lot smaller than they are in other places around the nation and the country. And I think that's the right way to do it. It's a far easier transition. So I'm really happy about that program and I don't like it, Mike shares in my excitement. We're going to see if we can help subsidize tuition. I could not get a break. It's in this day and age with a public university, that's very, very difficult to do and I don't think it would be easy with a private university. In fact, I think it'd be hard with a private university. So this is just the first stage in cementing a good partnership with UMass Lowell. Our next venture down the road will be to maybe talk to Middlesex College and see if we can't cement a partnership with them as well or Fitchburg State. I'm not, we're not sure yet. Another exciting venture that we're working on and it's almost closed as of today and I'd like to thank the town, in particular Keith Bergman for working with me on this and Mark Corry. We want to create a program next year for our high school students, a media program. And the program would occur at LCTV with the vision, actually, when I was surfing the web a number of months ago, I came across a school on the central United States that had created a news program with their students. So they had news anchors and reporters and really had a nice professional program. So my request was that we do the same thing. We replicate that and we'll develop a news channel, so to speak, and we'll focus on our school district and our town and community. So I'm really excited about that. That's really unique, way out of the box thinking and, again, I commend the town and I commend Mark Corry for, you know, thinking about these things. He's already a very busy man and for him to want to work with us and tackle that is, it's going to be an incredible experience. And these are life skills that the kids that choose to enroll in that program will have great opportunities. Maybe some of them will go into, into media. So again, very excited about that. I never thought we could pull it together as quickly as we did. And another real good thing is Steve kept running away from me when I kept talking about budget after we've already set a budget. We were able to talk about offering that second program at no cost to the school district. We're still trying to work out the transportation component, but that's incredible. I mean, that doesn't happen very often, but the way LCTV is funded, and this isn't a done deal yet, we're close, so there may be some funding required, but it gives the town a little more flexibility in terms of how to redistribute money. So really excited about that. There is one more, third component, working with some. community members, we're going to be experimenting with a financial literacy class next year. We're not going to run it five days a week, we're going to run it during some study halls, and it's really going to depend on the number of people that have financial backgrounds that want to help make this happen. I'm not sure what time of day we're going to offer it yet, but we already have a lead person in mind.
Probably first thing in the morning.
First thing in the morning. And really excited about that as well. So those are three pretty big things in a short period of time. So I thought I'd report that up to you.
I could just add, too.
Sure.
Superintendent, it's breaking news tonight, so because this is not well-known. This is something he's been working on for a while. I appreciate all the work and effort he's put into this, to make this come to fruition. We do have to get the word out, though, in advertising, we are in our scheduling process, it's already underway. Of course, the elections have been submitted by parents and students. So one of the things we'll have to do, the timing is actually just about right. You know, it's fine that they submitted their course requests, we haven't built the master schedule yet, but one of the things we'll have to do is get the word out to parents and to students about a nano-engineering course. We do expect limited enrollment due to the time constraints, the UMass Lowell partnership, and just how that will run. A lot of students may not, may not be able to take that because of their other commitments, other courses or co-curricular activities. The LCTV program, we're still determining the time during the day that will happen, and a lot of the specifics, as the superintendent mentioned. The financial literacy course is constrained by the availability of the instructor to teach at a certain time of the day, which is early morning, so that, that in turn will constrain enrollment. But that's no different from any other course we offer. We always have time constraints and choices that students have to make, one course versus the other. The specifics will be rolled out, though, to parents and students in the near future, probably next week. But I just wanted to make sure that I let you know that he is breaking news tonight, because this is not something that we have announced. He wanted you to hear it first, and I appreciate all he's done to make this happen.
Thank you.
I cannot talk about it. That's what I'm going to. I hope people realize how, this is just such a cool opportunity, and I think it'll market itself once, I mean, obviously you'll have to get the word out there, but really what we're talking about is, is, you know, I'm not sure everyone knows, that the students will be able to go into this lab that was an $80 million, state-of-the-art nanotechnology building that's, you know, I think MIT might have one that's comparable, but it's even older than this one. And we're talking about Littleton High School students going in there, learning, in the same place that these post-grad, you know, PhD students and, and, you know, college-level courses are going to be taught. So it's pretty incredible. And they're going to be, while they're doing it, they're going to be earning college credit, which, you know, this day and age, we hear in the news all the time about the cost of going to college, I'm sure you'll talk about it in your financial literacy program, which is also super cool. I'd have to talk about that another time. But, you know, people, people understand that it's, it's difficult for a lot of people to go to, to college, even if they attend a public school, and between AP courses and doing things like this, where you can hammer out some credits ahead of time, you know, that's, that's huge for, for students, especially if, if they're going, you know, at cost, or for almost, for nothing, I think, I don't know if that's been worked out yet, but that's, that's definitely huge. So I appreciate the work that you both, I know, John, you gave Kelly the credit, but I know you were involved as well.
But I don't want to be remiss, though, in also expressing thanks to you for building the bridge. I know you worked with the superintendent initially to get this underway, create the first meeting, just in terms of time commitment. I mean, the superintendent has had conversations, emails back and forth with UMass Lowell, but also took three personal trips up there to make this happen, you know, and that, you know, he doesn't have a, he has a busy schedule.
That's right. I think, you know, I think this is, it's cool, because, you know, when you talk about dual enrollment-type programs, and I think they're rarely this advanced of an opportunity. So, you know, this is the type of thing where Littleton is a small high school, we have, we can't build a nanotechnology building, so this is a good way to leverage our, I don't think we can, right, the budget?
Yeah, I know, yeah.
So, you know, appreciate the work you guys put in.
Thank you. Absolutely. There are three great programs that you just introduced or brought up that we're hoping to introduce in the next year, Kelly. And we've talked a little bit about UMass Lowell project, and I'm not going to repeat anything that Mike says, except that that's excellent, and that is leading the way, just as we were leading the way earlier this year with the alternative credit option for the PEE. We are really making do, we're really excelling under a lot of financial constraints. We're looking outside of the normal educational paradigm to found new ways of providing a good educational experience for our students, and one that is enriching and diverse, not just for standard bread-and-butter topics that you would see in a traditional high school, but going to nanotechnology. And financial literacy is something that we've, that everyone talks about. Everyone talks about at the policymaking level, is, oh, all of our students should be getting financial literacy. But when we look at it, very few of them actually are. And so being able to innovate and say, okay, maybe we can't have someone already on staff teach this course this year, because they're already working on so many other things. There's someone else who might be able to in the community. That's one of the recommendations that the task force made, is thinking in that, in that sort of way. And it's excellent that already, and it sounds like this has been going on since before that report, but I know, I know that Kelly and the Abbott team were involved in what the pursuit of excellence task force was doing during the process, and sharing those ideas and going back and forth is quite excellent. Quick question, do you know if that will be a credit-bearing course?
Yes, all of these courses will be credit-bearing.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah, yeah. We determine the credit, superintendent grants me the authority to issue credits based on review of the coursework. So the financial literacy course, though, will be, you know, because it could be a term course, might be less credit. The LCTV is a specific we still have to work out. The nano-engineering is absolutely credit-bearing. That was part of our discussions-
Right.
-and sort of negotiations with-
It's both high school and taught.
Yes, and that's important as part of the advertisement of the course, is that UMass Lowell will accept this for collegiate credit. And we imagine, because it's UMass Lowell credit, other institutes, other colleges, students decide to go, you know, like to go to another university, after graduating from Littleton High, will be able to take that course with them as a college course.
And that's already three or four credits under their belt, once they walk from the door.
It's a solid college course.
Which is, you know, money in the bank.
Yeah.
That's very helpful, as you're taking, you know, so much, so much of loans. And then the, the other question I would have is, when we do that, if we can just make sure that the non-traditional teachers or instructors of the financial literacy instructor is not, is not a teacher, so just making sure that we're covered from a regulatory standpoint, from a licensing standpoint, just dotting the i's.
Yes, for, first, for one section of the, this is not a licensed, there's no licensure in DSE for financial literacy right now.
Right.
So we're able to do this?
Yeah, the only caution, and we really need to give our Littleton Education Association some credit here as well, because they, this is all dotting for them. We start looking outside those four walls, and, you know, we've had a number of meetings with them as well, and we seem to have found a common ground, and, you know, one that is a fine line, of course. So our philosophy is really, from my point of view, is if we have a teacher that's capable of teaching a course, we're certainly not going to go in and bring somebody else in. As a superintendent, I have some latitude when it comes to one course, as John indicated, I can give him the authority to grant credit, providing I feel the curriculum is credit-worthy. So, you know, we have some checks and balances in place.
Excellent. And then, of course, the media program. Mark Corry was doing a lot of work in the high school a number of years ago, when we were able to stage that within the high school and did a budget restraint, so we had to, had to cut that program. It's excellent that we're bringing, bringing a similar program, I shouldn't say bringing it back, it is a different program, but bringing a similar media program, where they'll actually be able to use the new studio that LCTV has had for, well, maybe two or three, four years now, and it's, it's really quite, quite something, and I just hope that students will be able to get in there.
And it's important to realize that this is, this is part of a revitalized or renewed LCTV vision. So that allows us greater flexibility as well.
Excellent.
Let's take away everybody's comments about, you know, appreciating the effort that's required to put these things in place. In terms of the LEA, you know, I would hope that, as an administration and the teachers' union understands, that these kinds of things are coming down the road. I mean, it's inevitable, and you can't avoid it. And I think really the right way to think about it is, is how do we manage the transition and, you know, minimize the negative impacts and navigate any potential pitfalls, both to the professional staff and the students, but at the same time, take advantage of opportunities that are going to be beneficial. And I, without question, I would think that the staff is going to benefit by these kids being able to go out and come back and, you know, offer perspectives. And then, as you talked about, the three or four credits that the kids will get by virtue of a dual enrollment class. But again, you hit the nail on the head, Kelly, you talked about the, the experience of actually going to a state-of-the-art lab to work with, you know, fully accredited college instructors, teaching aid staffs, PhD students, doctor students, undergraduates, it's a totally different experience, and one that will impact them positively, and all likelihood positively, and give them a leg up when they get to the full-time campus and are ready to go. They'll have had that opportunity that many other districts won't have been able to afford. So, you know, kudos to us to be finding a way to get some kids out the building and give them an opportunity like that. I appreciate, John, what you're talking about in terms of making sure that all the opportunities and programs we're offering meet rigor. And then, obviously, the one thing I would offer is that, is making sure that we are getting involved in programs that have sustainability over time, and that we're not just throwing these flashes in the pans and saying, oh, look at what we did, and then we all turn our backs, and the next thing we realize, check back later, oh, we couldn't sustain it. And it might not be anybody's fault necessarily, just circumstances, so we just need to be cognizant of that, of sustainability, and making sure that, you know, these are things that we want to continue to do and are going to be able to do. And if we can't, then we might want to slow down a little bit and think about, well, if we're not going to be able to do this over time, let's think about directing the energy and opportunities in other directions. I know you do, and I just want to make sure that we're all thinking about that. But again, it's just, you know, great, great things to hear about, thank you very much. You know, we're always going to do the three Rs, and we're going to do them as well as we can, and really push it, but it's, it's good to know that we're taking advantage of emerging opportunities, because I think we're going to see more and more of this. So even if we do hit some bumps along the way, it'll be worthwhile as we, as we, you know, gain experience as a district and be able to understand how to do these things, because I guess, I think it's going to be more and more, not less and less. So, that's great, thank you.
I guess just one other point, and it's more of a broader-based curriculum. You saw a few of our students tonight in high school come to a school committee meeting, it's broadcast, cameraed, and they handled it professionally. They had that confidence, they were succinct and crisp. That doesn't just happen. And I really need to give our system a lot of credit for, for building those skills right from Shaker Lane on. That's not typical, and it's not something a lot of schools do emphasize, but we have emphasized it. Those soft skills, as I call them, are very important to me as a, as an educational leader, and we share that belief around the leadership table, and our teachers have done an outstanding job of creating those opportunities to have our students take risks and, you know, experience public speaking and become the educators, so to speak. I had the pleasure of interviewing 12, 12 students for Riley, which is a leadership program sponsored by Rotary. And I was just taken aback by their, their interview skills. I mean, they came into a room with, with four of us and didn't know what we were going to ask them, and they handled themselves so well. And the other people that were with me turned to me at the end and said, man, what are you doing in this district to create this kind of confidence and higher critical thinking? I mean, the reasons for wanting to take a leadership course, it just fascinated in terms of, you know, what they were coming up with. It was from their hearts. So I just wanted to share that with you as well.
All right. Superintendent, a quick.
Okay, that concludes the report.
Excellent.
That was a good one.
All right. Last, last opportunity for interested citizens, if we have anybody that'd like to come up and address the lectern.
How can I give my present? I missed the earlier telling. I apologize for being late. Lisa Boone. Few things. First, I have to say how happy and impressed I was with the Best Buddies presentation. I personally wanted to see this program here in Littleton. We, you know, we've had the program that Trish Bonacore had really gotten going at middle school, but we had not been able to be an official chapter. And so, and the students that Trish, you know, really started just were so passionate, and they were the ones who really pushed to get this program in place. So it wasn't just the adults on CPAC had talked about it some years ago, but it was costly, it was very expensive, and, and they're having to sustain that. And it's a, it's a tough job. It's a lot of money they have to raise every year to stay a chapter in Littleton. And these students have really taken it on, and they're not feeling like it's a burden, which is amazing. And then on top of it, they just are really embracing the program, and I feel like it's really going to change the culture at, at the high school level, which is significant, because now these students are going to go out into the world, whether it's college, workforce, military, whatever, and have a much better, in my opinion, ability to work with many other people, no matter what their skill level is or their background. It'll broaden that, because they're going to recognize and realize, even if somebody is different from them, that they have many, many qualities that can be beneficial in ways that they may not imagine, and, and by not, you know, essentially judging somebody just on the first meeting. So I think that's huge, I really do. So I'm, thank you so much. Okay, so, second thing, CPAC. We have a CPAC meeting. Our monthly business meeting is coming up on Tuesday evening, 7:30 at the high school. So if anybody's interested, we're looking to kind of wind things up for the year. We're looking to decide on presentations for next year that we're going to be trying to schedule and get going, and some unfinished business. We've been working with the town library to create an influx of books for parents and teachers and students that address all different issues with special needs, whether it's educational about what the special need entails, or strategies, methodologies, the latest and greatest things that are going on. We're looking to put more at the library in town for parents, and we're, we're working with the library to do that. And we're also getting support from our district. Thank you, Rita. So she's been helping to also fund some of the titles that we're going to try to put there. And we're looking for input from parents and, and staff, if there are titles that they'd like to see that are not easily accessible, because they can be expensive. So that's, you know, some of the big things we're working on. And then, totally, and that next thing, there has been, most recently, or, and I should say again, some issue with handicap parking at the schools. And it really isn't just one school, it seems to be all the schools at different times, well, primarily at pickup times, is when parents have been really frustrated, because there are a number of students in our district who really do require handicap parking for various reasons. Some are not as obvious to people as, as others. Some are not physical disabilities that are obvious. And what's happening is parents, students, even staff are parking in these spots at times when these parents need to be able to have access to them. And so it's, I know that the principals have tried to deal with this in the past, with other issues as well, during pickup and drop-off times. We've had numerous difficulties with that since the, a good number of parents are now dropping off and picking up instead of using the bus service. And so I think, you know, just making you aware that parents are starting to get upset, they're, they're going to, they've been complaining and, and concerned and trying to decide what the next step is, if there is going to be one necessary. So, so we just figured we'd let it, let you know that-
I think you're being too nice. There is no time that those spots should be occupied, regardless of whether or not it's pickup or drop-off, unless they're being occupied by the people who are authorized to occupy it.
Right, right.
So I think, obviously, you guys know about this, I'm sure you're working with, you know, but maybe we could also have a talk with the school resource officer and escalate it up towards the police department, maybe we could get a little presence every now and then, just to make sure that, you know, everybody understands.
We'll follow up with that.
And we did have an opportunity-
First we've learned of it is tonight, at Central Office.
Right. We did have an opportunity to speak with Rita about it today, because that was when we had our meeting with her. And we, we talked about what our, what our avenues were, and, you know, because, you know, some of the parents saying, I'm just going to call the chief of police and have him come ticket people.
And that's okay.
You know, and I know that that's an option, but, you know, the goal really is to remind people that these- that these spots are important. I think sometimes people become complacent and think, oh, what's the big deal? I'm only here for a minute. But it really is a big deal. And so, you know, we just want to bring that to light again and remind people that those spots are intended and needed, even if you don't, aren't quite aware of that need.
Is it one school in particular?
No, unfortunately, it's not. It's been Shaker Lane, middle school, high school. I'm not sure about Russell Street, but those three at least are definitely constant complaints.
I'm wondering if we could, as an initial staff, if the principals could just send out an email to the parent list. I know you send out a lot of emails anyway. Just a quick, hey, just as a reminder, handicap spaces are really necessary. We need them open, just for a minute. There have been some complaints. We appreciate your help. Because I think, you know, a lot of people probably just don't even think about it.
They should.
They should.
No, they do, exactly.
They're all clearly marked.
They rationalize it, I'll be here for a minute.
Right. No, and I think that's what it is. I think people do rationalize it and don't think they're going to have an impact when they do end up having an impact. And some people have actually, parents have said, I actually knocked on the window and I got yelled at. And she said, I said to them, you cannot park here, you know. So she was quite upset that it was not even, it wasn't even, I'm sorry.
And maybe the distinction needs to be made that live parking, you're still parking. You're still occupying the spot. And it can be, you know, you can't just say, oh, I'll just pull out. It's like, no, no. It doesn't take you off the book.
We'll start taking pictures of licensed places and send them to the police department.
Put it in there.
So I just wanted to bring that up, because it has been something that's been, I guess, going on. So, all right, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other interested citizens? All right. Subcommittee reports, PMBC.
In this most recent meeting, I don't think there's anything to report.
Very good. Budget Subcommittee, we're under the report. We're kind of done with the budget for now, barring any stunning revelations from the State House. Good or bad, preferably good.
They won't be bad.
Won't be bad, okay.
Might not be good, might be anything.
All right. As long as it's what we planned on, I guess we'll survive. And then, you know, we'll obviously wait for town meeting to occur and we'll go through that process. All right. Darryl, I mean, yeah, Darryl didn't make it for Policy Subcommittee. I don't think we had anything on the agenda anyway for policy, so no problem there. All right. Any old business that any of us have? Anything else? We're good? All right. We're in the executive session, so we'll just hand a motion to adjourn. Three weeks, we got a three-week, the April week, we got one more full week of school, then April vacation. So we won't meet during April vacation. We're next back here on April 30th, which is three weeks from tonight. Hopefully, spring will be here by the time we get back.
It has to be.
It'll be summer.
And still, it may be summer.
As long as it's not what it is right now, I'll take it. All right? All right. Motion adjourned?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
All right.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody.